Bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this day and thank you for everything you've given us. Thank you for the opportunity to live in a great city. Please be with us tonight as we make decisions. May we consider the people, the citizens that live in our town. May the decisions we make have a lot of thought behind them and a lot of heart. In Jesus' name I pray, amen. Item two is approval of the agenda. Got a first and second?
If I can before this, I'm gonna move Adam D. off of new business for the night.
Okay.
I might as well go ahead and remove item A because I've had some incomplete reports back today. One's actually removed himself from the consideration, so I'd like to defer that one for right now.
Okay, great. Anything else tonight? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item three is citizens' comments.
Mayor, there are no citizens' comments tonight.
Okay, thank you. Item four, awards and recognition.
Mayor, we have none from staff tonight.
Okay. Anybody else? Well, I'll do that in public announcements. I would like to announce there's a, we had a Fairview High School young man receive, Jacob Rains, received the Merit Award for the high school and so hopefully I can invite him real soon and we can recognize him. But I would say it was such an honor and it's so exciting to have a Fairview High School student receive this award, so I look forward to maybe getting him here and we can all recognize them. If that's it, we'll move on. Let's see. I had something pop up where it's messing with my internet. Next item would be public announcements.
Thank you, Mayor. Admissions testing from 7:30 till noon, Monday and Tuesday of each week.
Okay, thank you. And then I also had an announcement from the Friends of the Bowie Nature Park Garden. They have a crew meeting on Saturday, February 20th at 9:00 a.m. at Bowie Nature Center. I was told you did not have to be a member to come and help out and help beautify the park and so any citizens that would like to come and participate, feel free. And then if you want to join the Friends of Bowie Park, I'm sure they would show you how and it's a great organization, does a lot for our park and we're very thankful to have them. Any other? Okay, staff comments. And we'll start, oh wait, did I move? Nope, that's right. Staff comments, we'll start with Mr. Hall as the codes director.
Thank you, Mayor. I announced this the other night at the planning commission, but I think it's something that needs to be announced quite frequently. Our Roadscapes project will have the pre-construction meeting next week. This will move us forward to fruition to start getting the beautification that Dan Kubik worked so hard on for so many years and this is a grant that's been going on since 2006. So I think we're very fortunate to be able to pick this grant back up and hopefully it'll be a beautification for our city for years to come.
Wonderful. And I will tell you, I don't think you were with me, but we were both at the same MPO meeting and Anna Emerson made the comment about, because I was thanking her for all the assistance with the latest, the sidewalk, the multi-modem grant. And she just really gave you a compliment, what a good job and how you've just been moving things forward and how impressed, so I do want to thank you for that. It's nice, I see it, but it's nice to have somebody from the outside in that role see it.
Thank Anna and also Michael come by and give me a good handshake and thank me for the way that went too and that's her boss, Michael Skipper with the MPO. So they're very nice people and they, Fairview is on their radar, let's put it that way. So that's a good thing.
Yeah, I'm very thankful for those relationships. Okay, Ms. Johnson, do you have anything for us?
Just a quick census update. We're just over 7,000 in our count right now and we have about 10 days to finish up and get that to the certification agency, so we're pushing hard to get those finished up. Door knocking, specific routes all through next week.
Okay, so they, the door knocking has not begun?
It has, no, it has begun. They've been door knocking for two weeks off and on, but the final push will happen over the next week.
Okay, okay. And what was our last census report number?
Seventy-eight.
So we're 800?
I think it was right at 7,900 for the last one.
Oh, man.
Seventy-eight, twenty-two.
Yeah, so a lot of people moved out of Fairview or they're not filling out their census, so.
We're going to the legacy apartments in the morning to talk to the manager and they're gonna help us with theirs, so that should be a big chunk right there.
Okay. Once again, I just encourage the citizens, it's so important that we get this taken care of. I'd sure hate to lose money because, you know, we no longer have the same amount of people, so, and I'm not talking tax dollars. I know everybody thinks, you know, when we talk about money, it's all about taxes, but it's really about how the money, we, it's determined a lot of things that we get in help, so I really, really can't say enough, please fill out your census.
I just have a quick question. If the number that they come up with is less than the last census, do we still do the certification part or can we save that money, I hope?
I see no reason to certify it if we don't need it.
We're not contractually obligated to certify, that's what I was, uh, good, okay, good. Well, I mean, I didn't think so, I don't recall us doing anything, but I just wanted to make sure that we could do that.
Commissioner, that's been one question I've had on my mind for, I'm glad you asked it.
Okay. I really do not believe this is the case. I hope that we can get out and if, you know, let us know if I need to knock on doors, let's get it done because there's certainly, you know, I sure hate to waste the money. Anybody, okay, anybody more questions for Ms. Johnson? Okay, Mr. Dougherty.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few items I want to. First off is the tax anticipation note was paid off yesterday.
Yay!
The, I was, I was really glad to write that check and take it down there and hand it to them. All items have been turned in to TDOT for the resurfacing grant funds to be issued. They said it usually takes about 30 days and that was, I think, a week and a half ago. So hopefully it'll be less than 30 days and the GAN will be behind us as well. We had a fire staff study meeting with MTAS Fire Management Consultant Dennis Wolfe Tuesday. Got it started primarily, what we're doing is statistical analysis, getting numbers together for him. He's reviewing a lot of our documents and he said that this process probably takes six to eight weeks. So he's got a lot of other things going on and he's handling pretty much the state by himself. Also in attendance at that meeting were Training Officer Scott Hughes, Chief Travis O'Neill, and also a guest came in, Management Consultant Jeff Broughton.
Okay.
So it was a lot of ideas thrown back and forth and I was very encouraged by the This next thing I have is I just been holding this under my hat for some time. The, there's a lot of funds left on the table with the Fire Safer Grant, you know, because the raises didn't go like they anticipated and this, that, and the other and I have to give kudos and just pat on the back and good job and excellent work to Training Officer Scott Hughes. He told me, he said, "Don't say anything till it's a done deal." But what we were trying, he had really been working on getting the grant extended and he worked a deal with the grant folks where they, instead of extending it, they would pay us for anybody hired within that grant time. So we did hire two fire employees, so we got to count their salaries. So I got, I'm gonna read this email and I don't know if y'all get excited as I did, but this email is confirmation that your payment request for grant number, too long of a number than I can read, in the amount of $109,996 has been approved. Your payment was accepted by our financial system on 2/17/2016. Please expect electronic payment to be made to the bank account within three to five business days. So I just want to say thank you to Gunny and that's a, that's a man, a gift, gift from up there that I just was glad to see. But anyway, it was good news and I just wanted to share it.
Yeah, that's great news.
I guess we'll go on to January's numbers. Looking, looking pretty good. I left my copy in the, in my office, so if there's any detailed stuff y'all want to go over, I may run back and get it real quick, but we had revenue of $523,357. And on this graph, I just take the top, I say top, the most, the things that take up the most of our revenue as far as the top 10. So as you see, property taxes, 30, local option sales taxes, state sales tax, state share, local option, school facilities, TVA payment, lower taxes, et cetera. Property taxes usually take a dip in January, but they'll kick in strong in February. Right off the top of my head, I'm thinking after January, we were in the 65% range. That's a guesstimate, I'd have to double check, but. And this is looking at what we, the blue line represents our budget and what we've tried to do, or what I've tried to do is time when revenues will come in throughout the year. And then at the end number, of course, that's the final, what we budgeted. Of course, the red line represents actual, we're well ahead, which we anticipated since we used last year's numbers as our base point for our projections. But our projections for January were $508,996. We brought in $523,357 for over projections, $14,361. Year-to-date, $3,279,788 in our budget projections. We brought in $3,483,691 for $203,903 over our budget projections. So, any questions on that? As far as our expenditures for January, again, salaries, we did have to pay, I believe that was workman's comp insurance last month. See if anything else jumps out. Oh yeah, and we paid, that street paving was, came out of the state street aid for our portion of the resurfacing grant, the 11% there. All right, the blue line again represents our budget projection. We want to stay below it and again, we're well under it. We're under our projections, $139,638. We did come over and over our projections this month and the primary reason somehow February's medical insurance payments showed up, a date was entered incorrectly, so medical and dental insurance will not be on next year's budget. So that was $32,000 there that was made up portion of that. Year-to-date revenue versus expenditures, this is exciting. We've been, revenues have outpaced expenditures five out of seven months this year and especially with the revenue cycle being November through March, it's when usually most cities revenue is where, you know, when property tax season. It's just been, we've been able to hold our expenditures down and the revenue has been coming in like we thought. We've got a $747,705 surplus as of January 31st. And this is probably the thing I'm really most excited about. For the first time since I've been here at the City of Fairview, all funds show a positive balance. That does not mean we're where we need to be. The goal under the stabilization plan is to have it unassigned at right around a million dollars, but it sure is nice not to have a negative number there. Everything else, pretty self-explanatory. That's my finance report.
Tom said I was gonna like tonight, I think he's right. I think I might cry. No, it's a great place to be, especially to be a year ago where we were. It's a great place to be and thank you so much and Mr. Hall and the city staff for what y'all are doing to try to keep us on track. The only question I did have was how do you, this fund, the money we're gonna get back from the grant for the fire department, how will that be logged when you go?
Surplus.
Surplus. Okay. And will it go just, I guess, salaries because it's for the police, or fire department?
It's general fund monies.
Okay.
They just go into, into an account and if you allocate it, I mean, it's $109,000 we wouldn't have had, I mean, as of, I got this email yesterday.
Yeah.
So before that, I didn't think that money was gonna be there, I had no idea it would be there.
Yeah. Very, very exciting news, glad to hear it. Any other comments or questions?
Good job.
Okay, keep it up. We've got a long way to go. Okay, that will conclude. Do we have, oh, sorry, I didn't want to leave you out. Glad you're back there to, Mr. Paisley.
I got one thing. The park is participating in a Weed Wrangler Nashville, March 5th, from 9 until noon. This is gonna, hopefully we get volunteers coming out to help remove some exotic evasives again out in the park, but this is a, pretty much a Nashville-wide thing going on. It's sort of a new thing to us, so we're gonna give it a go and see what we can do.
Yeah, great, sounds exciting, do something different. And so people, what, did you give the date on that?
March 5th.
March 5th.
From 9:00 a.m. to noon and you have to preregister at www-weardrangler.org.
Okay.
It's a way for them to keep up on how many people come out.
Okay. Okay, anything else?
No.
Camp's going good, still signing up?
Still signing up.
Okay, great, good news, thank you.
Uh huh.
And nobody else, right? Okay, this will give us approval of the consent agenda, I guess?
Boo, approve, second.
Okay, we got a first and second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item nine, old business, we don't have any tonight. Ten would be new business. We will move to item B, which will be our new A, and it's Discuss and Take Action Finance Review Committee and that will be Commissioner Crutcher.
Thank you, Mayor. I asked that this be put on the agenda. We had had some discussions some time back and since then I've talked to Mr. Dougherty about the Finance Review Committee. And in our discussion, I know Tom's position is, is that, I don't want to speak for Tom, but I think Tom's position is, is that at this point, things have kind of, the ship has kind of righted and he doesn't feel like that the Finance Review Committee really adds anything or provides any value to assist him in the job that he has. And as the board member that is part of that committee, I didn't want the committee just to be sort of left in the dark as to whether or not it did or didn't exist or whether or not it was or wasn't going to be used because we've had citizens that have volunteered to be on that committee and it just seems like something that's kind of just been left with no real direction, just sort of hanging out there. So I just wanted to bring it to the board to discuss whether or not we wanted to continue to have a Finance Review Committee so that we could just bring closure to that or if we do want to continue to have the Finance Review Committee, then let's set meetings and, whether they be quarterly or otherwise, and go forward with it.
Any comments? I actually think it has a value. I do think that, you know, the reason it was recommended by the audits, auditors where it was a different time and maybe that check and balance, I still think we need it. I think we do have citizens that offer a great value, even if it's not a monthly meeting. I know we talked about quarterly, but I would even be okay if they met the mid-year, you know, would be the only requirement meeting and anything else be on-call basis when Mr. Dougherty, you know, or the city manager or the board seems necessary. So meaning, you know, midway to the budget year, you know, have a meeting, review, and then any other time it would just be as-needed basis because I think it is important to just have the citizens' involvement and kind of see where we are and it would, you know, I think be, you know, very helpful, yes.
And if I may, I'm not necessarily advocating that it go away, I just wanted to hear all of the board members' perspective on it as well as Mr. Dougherty's perspective, Mr. Hall's perspective. I just think we need to either have it and its role be defined and its meetings be set or on an as-needed basis or we need to disband it. Because to me, there's just uncertainty about the function of it, what its purpose is, what it's going to do, if it is of assistance to Tom, and of course I want Tom to give us his perspective as well on this because I think that's very important. But I'm not saying right now which way I'm leaning on it, I just want to hear everybody's perspective on it and if it's, if it's not helpful to Tom, I don't think it's fair to just keep citizens sort of in the dark about, you know, whether or not we're gonna have a Finance Review Committee or not or where it stands. And that's kind of what I'm bringing this for, is just to get a status update on where it is.
Well, and I would like to comment, I mean, no offense, Tom, but it's not about Tom. It was put together because of the audit, seeing that we needed that check and balance and it would be one more thing. Has nothing to do with Tom, whether or not somebody needs to be looking over him. It's just like any board we have is, it's one more opportunity for citizen involvement and to have a check and balance.
But Mayor, those, the same, the same group that told us to put it together told us it was not necessary anymore.
Well, I disagree with her, you know, because basically what she said, and this was not the purpose of it, that all of a sudden they're insinuating the Finance Committee should have been checking, you know, our policy and procedures to the budget and, you know, to me, I just, I wasn't, I didn't agree with the report, I'm not an auditor, but if you think about it, the logistics, just like any other board, it's a check and balance. It's an opportunity to have citizens involved and it's nothing, no committee that we have means the city is doing it wrong. It just, it's just one more opportunity to do it right.
When was the last time we had a meeting? It was last, it was the first quarter of this fiscal year. No, no, we had one since then. We've had at least one since then. I think we've had one the first quarter of this fiscal year, I think. Yeah, and we've not had one since. So I don't care whether we have it or we don't have it, but if we're gonna have it, I just want there to be some, some structure as to, one, what's its purpose because I think that's been unclear. Two, when's it gonna meet and if we're gonna have it, then let's do the meetings and have the meetings. That's all I'm proposing. I mean, and Tom, I definitely want to hear your perspective.
I do as well.
Go ahead.
I've prepared a short and simple statement and I can back it up with whatever y'all, y'all want to hear. You know, I'm not, this is not a political statement, it's just a, just Tom Dougherty's opinion, but I feel the committee serves no useful purpose and I recommend that the committee be eliminated. You know, as far as checks and balances, I feel like we're the most checked and balanced institution in America. I've got, as far as Finance Committee, I mean, anytime I need help or I need an answer, there's nobody on that committee I can turn to. You know, I call State Comptroller, I call the audit firm, I call MTAS, I go to somebody that knows more than me. And I, there's nothing, no disrespect to anybody on the, on the committee because they're all very qualified professionals in their profession, but anybody that's ever been involved in municipal finance knows it's a, it's a different beast. I've been involved in, in business, keeping my own books and running and it's just a totally different ballgame. It's different. I guess if we went or we tried to do this, I would like to focus on maybe folks that have done it before, folks that had been in this, maybe a retired CFO or maybe a, somebody that has been in municipal finance that knows what to look for. Now, anybody can add and subtract, but that, I think we, I think we had a, you know, I think we got a lot, we got everything going in the right direction. As far as, I've spent a lot of time trying to come up with purpose, I've spent a lot of time and I feel like any route we go, you've got a lot of issues, either if the, if the committee decides they want to go over every financial decision that's gonna come before the board and they want to provide a recommendation from the Finance Committee to do something, then I've got to take all that to them, then they bring it to you, which that's been proposed before. Um, there, if they're going to just, um, look at numbers, I, I think they can get a group together and pull it offline, and I mean, every, I don't see how it can be any more transparent. I take every, everything's triple reconciled, and the banks, I mean, on the last page is straight from our cash bank accounts. So, I guess, what I struggle with is what are they gonna do? How are they gonna help me? And, and, and to me, the answer, and, and everybody I've talked to, everybody at MTAAS says, if they're not helping you, why have it? The whole purpose is for them to help the CFO. And if we can come up when we get a purpose where they aid the city and aid the CFO, I, I'd probably be for it. Uh, but everything we've done, if, if we try to give them education, uh, well, that, that's going, or, or if, you know, if you're, if you're gonna go that route, you're gonna have to have a lot more meetings than just quarterly or even monthly. If you're gonna, if they're wanting to look at every financial thing we do, um, and to present it to y'all, we'd have to have bi-weekly meetings. If, if we're going to quarterly, um, I don't know what we're gonna look at. Uh, and, and, and the bottom line is, I'm doing everything anyway. There, I just have had a hard time coming up with purpose and what, what are we gonna do? And, and there's been a lot of ideas bounced around, but, um, for me personally, it's hindered me more than it's helped, because I feel like if I really need an answer, I'm going to the state, or to MTAAS, or to the audit firm, and that's where I'm gonna get my answer. I mean, I, I just, I just feel that's just where I need to go. And that's, that's my logic behind it. And that, it's not that I don't want the citizens to be involved. It's not that I don't want, it's, it's not a political thing. It's just about me doing my job. Thank you.
Okay, yes. Commissioner Prusell?
If, if I could give a perspective, uh, since David Mayberry left two CFOs ago, uh, I would submit that I've probably been the commissioner that's been most involved up until my resignation and Commissioner Crutcher took on. And when this committee was first, uh, proposed, it really, as drafted, as I recall, had, had, uh, was supposed to have some influence on, uh, future, how we would spend our money to make better on, on the city. Now, we were faced with a financial situation that required the committee to focus on, uh, how can we put it back on the right track, or whatever words you would like to have. And I, and I do think for a period of time, that's exactly what happened. I, and, uh, Ms. Brooks and I were talking a little earlier, and it was pretty painful if you were part of the process. But at the end of the process, we got a pretty good work product. But where we are now is that we are just operating that work product from day to day. So, I, I don't want to get confused. I, I, uh, in my presentation, I want people to understand that, tooth and toenail, I pushed against it at times, but in an overall assessment, I think the finance committee helped us get to what we saw earlier today. But I agree with Tom, that now we've reached the point of staying the course, which is the primary responsibility of he and the city manager and the five of us. And so, the oversight per se, uh, is ours. It is, it is ours of what gets spent, what doesn't get spent, what's the exception to the rule, what, what isn't the exception to the rule. Now, if our plan continues to work, as I expect it to be, that we hold firm when we enter the new budget cycle, we put in a budget for next year that is very much similar to the budget we put in this year, and that we continue a year or so down the road, I think there is the potential that the finance committee would then be very beneficial because we would have the surplus of funds, and they could be helpful in developing where we were gonna invest that, what debt were we gonna retire sooner, what, what other capital investments that, once again, they would have a purpose on the positive side as they, as they had the purpose to help right the ship on the negative side. But I, I think we're in a, uh, a, part of the cycle that is the, uh, run with what we've got. And, and I, to have a group of people give of their time, which I, I do appreciate, but I've heard my CFO say, "I got it." And the questions that he's asking are not about policy or whatever. He's asking about technical, how do you do this? How do you do that? Am, am I putting words in your mouth? So, so, from where we are and what our budget looks like and how we're operating now, I, I think we should suspend the finance committee. And then, when we do reach this pinnacle that we are seeking, we fulfill our plan, that we then look at, uh, is it appropriate to reconstitute them? Can we give them a positive mission to help us determine, now that we've got this million dollars, uh, built up, what should we be doing with it? How should we be investing it? What, what are some of the stuff? And we will also have a two-year track record of, of, I guess, uh, uh, adherence to a plan. And we can decide from that point forward, it, you know, they could help in that. Uh, deciding was that, were we really as smart as we thought we were when we got to the end? So, I, I don't, I don't know what the proper way to phrase that is, but, uh, I keep thinking that, that suspending it for further evaluation at some point in time when we get closer to our goal as to how they can help out is, is the way we ought to go. And that, uh, for the interim, Tom's gonna come in here every month and report to us. We can see whether or not we need to, at any particular time, issue a recall. Uh, you know, it turns south or something. But for now, our CFO, who is the responsible officer, is telling us that it's lost value to him from the, the crisis management. And I think we should acquiesce to his wishes, especially if we continue to get reports like we got tonight. Thank you for letting me comment.
Anybody else?
Just, just quickly, and, and the other thing is, is if we're gonna suspend it, is the purpose of, again, the purpose of bringing this up is, is we've said, I think, at one point, we was gonna have quarterly meetings, and we've just simply not done that. We had one the first quarter of this year, and that's it so far. And the one that I did attend, uh, the first quarter lasted an hour, an hour and a half, and I don't know what we accomplished, to be honest with you. I think we did a lot of talking about what our purpose was, and that was really it. And I just don't feel like that's fair for citizens to come up here and devote their time for us to not really be of, of any useful purpose to the city. That was my, that was my concern. It was more about the citizens coming. I don't mind coming up here and spending an hour and a half. I do it a lot. But I didn't want citizens to come up here and spend an hour and a half and not really have direction in what their purpose was.
Is there a motion on the table?
I move to suspend, um, meetings of the finance review committee until called upon by, upon by this board to reconvene, or the city manager, or, uh, I don't know the proper way to say it. Somebody help me.
Or the city manager or CFO requests the reconvening of the committee?
Second.
Okay, first and second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Okay. That will be it for new business?
No. You got a ballot question on there?
Oh, the ballot measure. Okay. That will be the new B, which is C, the new B. Discuss and take action on ballot measures, and that would be Crutcher.
I'm not gonna be very popular tonight at all. I can tell you, I, I, I talked to the city attorney earlier about this. And this is more, I don't think there's any action necessarily needed by the board at this point. But I know at some point, um, early in my term, I had presented a resolution to this board that before I did go to the city attorney, uh, with anything that I wanted to have him research or draw up, that I would bring it before the board. And one of the things that I am, I'm looking into, and I called the election commission today to check on deadlines for referendums on the upcoming, uh, general election in November. And I think we're still within that timeframe to where we can get a referendum vote on the ballot in November. But I want Larry to check into the legality of some of the charter changes that I'm looking at. And there's two in particular. One, when, originally, when the charter was adopted, the mayor was elected by this board. Uh, since that time, the la, the mayor is the only seat on this commission that is now, um, the seat-specific, popularly elected. Uh, whereas the rest of us are just at-large and, and don't run for a specific seat. The upcoming election, there's going to be three commissioner seats available. It's my position that the charter, based on the fact that now the elect, the mayor is popularly elected, that when three seats are up, one of those seats should be the mayor, instead of three commissioners. So, it would basically be a reversal of the way it is now. And what I've asked Larry to do is look into how to facilitate that process legally, uh, and for it to be a vote for the people, I don't think, or to, sent to the people in a referendum, as to whether or not that change would be made.
Well, um, and that, it's easier to take one of the commissioner's seats and move it to the mayor than it will be the mayor to the commissioner, the way it's set.
That's what I'm saying.
Oh, no, I thought you said it the opposite.
The time that the, the, the three, when the three seats, when there's three people running, one of those folks will be the mayor. But it'll be what you're, what you just described. The three that would be up, hypothetically, the three that would be up for election in November, one of those seats, two years from then, would have to run again with when the mayor ran.
It would just be two seats and two seats and the mayor.
Yeah, two seats would be running for four-year terms. One seat would run for two-year terms.
Right.
You're changing it to do-year terms? Is what you're, that's what he just said, is you're saying.
Just one seat would be two years, and then they would have to run again in two years.
We need to figure out a way legally that whoever finishes third has a two-year seat.
Right. In this upcoming election, whoever finishes third would have a two-year seat. And then, when my seat's up again and your seat's up again, that person would have to run with us.
Run again. Gotcha.
So, the, yeah, so there would be three running, but one of them would be the mayor, instead of just three commissioners. That's what I'm proposing. And then, the, the second one that's not gonna be popular, and I'm, I think it's been talked about a lot before, is the possibility of putting to a vote, uh, for the public to vote on term limits, and that it would be two terms. And then, my position is, is you would have to sit out a term before you could run again. So, those are the two things that I'm asking be sent for a referendum. And now, tonight, all I'm asking is Larry, this board, give Larry the permission to look into the legality of how to get that on the ballot in November.
Question?
Yes.
In your concept, does the mayor, is the mayor a different position, or is it one of the?
Different.
Different position?
Different position. So, you could, you could.
You could serve two terms as commissioner and then serve a term as the mayor, two terms as the mayor.
Yeah.
And a mayor could serve two terms as mayor and then come and serve as commissioner.
Yes. That's what I envisioned, because in, because in.
You're bringing it up. I'm, I'm asking you.
Because in metro, you can, they have, they have, obviously, you run for specific seats, and then they have at-large. But you, there's term limits on, as I understand it, the specific seat. But then you can do your term limit there and then turn around and run for an at-large berth. Is that right, Larry?
That's correct. Um, there is some question as to whether the mayor could run more than two terms uh, under the legislation that they, that they adopted. Uh, that has not been answered authoritatively, because no mayor has sought to succeed himself more than once. But, uh, yes, uh, it has been answered. You can be a councilman at large two terms, and then you could run for the council for two terms, and you could go back and run for council at large for two terms.
I think I said an at-large berth. I'm getting ready for March Madness. I meant an at-large berth for election.
But, uh, as, as to whether the mayor could succeed himself, I don't know. That hasn't been answered. I do know that the legislation, when it was adopted by the, uh, people in Davidson County, did not specifically mention the mayor. But that's just my thought. Nobody's tried it. So, I guess when somebody does, they'll, they'll get a definitive answer.
Well, and we can save the city a lot of money by just voting for it right here. And, you know, we don't, we.
It's gotta go through the charter and stuff?
No, we can change the charter. We just have to take it to the state representative and to the senate and have it pass.
It depends on, it depends on what you're doing. There's some things, just like, for example, when they changed the mayor's seat from being elected by the, the, uh, uh, board to a vote, uh, of the popular vote of the people. That had to be put on a referendum.
Yeah, but the, the term limit situation can, because I looked into it my first year, because I heard the same thing from the people, and I tried to bring it up, but it really got nowhere.
Yeah.
So, but I looked at it, and the state representative, they said they wanted us to be a majority. Then they would, um, it would go to the state, um, representatives. Then, once it passed, it would go to the senate. But we had to all, um.
What you typically do.
They wanted four of us.
Yeah. Well, actually, they sat in that office, um, and told us when, um, Jack came, that they wanted the majority. They prefer the majority. Not saying that they wouldn't, but really.
They did not want three out of five. They, I was told the minimum would be four out of five for them to take it to the floor.
They couldn't do it, period, without a majority.
Well, no, I, I was trying to say, instead of a majority, I took it under that, in that meeting, that they wanted us all a consensus vote.
They wanted us, they really wanted us all in favor, but they would accept four out of five, but not just three out of five, a simple majority.
I got you.
They wouldn't take it to the floor with three out of five.
The ones you typically change that way starts out with a resolution from this board to your state representative and your state senator. But there's some things, just like what he was mentioning about changing for a shorter term, that's probably, and I'll have to research this. But those typically have to be a referendum.
Yeah. Well, and I've asked before too, is one of the things that you hear the most complaint is, it's nice, like, when I ran for, um, the commission seat that Shannon has, and as a commissioner, I ran against one person. Now, two or three people could have all ran against that one person, and that would have been fine. So, if a citizen doesn't like the job that a commissioner's doing, it's really easy to, you know, remove that seat, or that person out of the seat. But when we have it as three, it's harder to remove, because A, you got three positions, and you're doing the top, then you have all these people run, and it's, it's harder to do the turn, and that's what people would, you know, um.
Are you saying that to give me a compliment?
No. I'm not trying to give you a compliment.
I'm not worried with you.
I'm not trying to give a.
Ready to support Shannon in this right now. Let, let Larry bring it to us, so.
Um, but I just, you know, it's one of those things, but Larry has told me when I've asked about that, and I think that is the best way. And then you see who they really want to keep and who they, um, don't want to keep, is because you, when you're running for the seat. But Larry's told me we can't do that because of.
That's the same question a long time ago.
Okay, see? I mean, and what, is something about the pop, um, the population, or we, what? Yes.
A couple of things, I think, might help. If we go on out to the cemeteries and get this count up to about 10,000, then we could really change the charter and have, uh.
Wards and at-large.
Have wards and at-large and all that stuff. We're, we're gonna get there. That part of it is coming. So, so, changing, while I think, uh, Commissioner Crutcher's idea of, of doing two and two, and the mayor just keeps on being the mayor on that, that third one, is a good one. I think we're gonna get to the other in the not-too-distant future. So, I'm, I'm not so much in, in trying to modify that. The other thing is, I too, for sure, am not coming back for, for another term. Uh, self-imposed term limits, I suppose. But I also think strongly that that should be a decision that we need to put on the referendum, even if we could do it ourselves. Uh, I would not feel comfortable in making that decision for the future, knowing how hard it is to get the charter changed. Uh, I, I would not feel comfortable making that decision for the future of Fairview without knowing what, uh, the public at-large wanted to do. So, even if we, uh, do want to proceed with that, and we do want to put it on a referendum. So even if we do want to proceed with that, and we do want to put it on a referendum, which I will vote for that, I'm not, I would not, I would vote no against us just drafting a resolution to set up term limits. So I think that needs to be done by the public at-large, just like it was done when we decided to have an elected mayor versus one that was done up. So that's, thank you for letting me speak.
Yeah, thank you. I can read the headlines now. Stewart's leaving, then he sets term limits. Just one more.
I promise this wasn't directed at Stewart. Anybody that would do this for 16 years-
Yeah, I mean-
Oh, I took it as a-
Probably needs a mental evaluation, for sure.
I took it as a compliment, so. I can't win the mayor's race, but every time I ran for the commissioners' race in this three, I finished first the last three times, so.
Yeah, I'm with you.
Well, I agree with Alan. I would strongly support it being put on a referendum for the citizens to decide themselves.
So I guess at this point, Larry, can you research that and bring it back next?
I can research it and bring you the options.
Yeah.
If there may be, if there's more than one way, then I'd say, here's the option, here's the option, and you guys tell me what you want to do.
Thank you.
Do I take it that y'all are leaving and we're all agreeing on something?
I know, I know people hate my analysis, but if you went back and looked at, for those of us who served together, Shannon's, you know, still in the first couple of years, but if you go back and look at how we've actually voted over the years, there's a lot of propaganda out there that indicates that, but over 90% of the time, we did all vote together.
Yeah, I remember that coming out during the mayor's election.
It's very interesting, this plan.
And I will say this, Mayor, what Commissioner Crutcher has proposed is different than what you proposed, in the fact that somebody still could run for a seat and never have a lapse being on the board. Yours was two terms, and you're out, period. This one's going to allow you to go for another seat, and if you have the opportunity to win, you're still a member of the board.
I think we, in our discussion, I would have to review the tapes, and you maybe, I think that was a discussion, I didn't care if they took a seat or time off or however, so it may be some difference without watching the tape. But yeah, I'm, I understand, and I think that sounds great, and-
For years, that's what it was with sheriffs and state attendants, you could run three terms and had to back out a term. I know a few that became judges and never wear a lawyer.
Yeah.
It's that way with the governor at one time, too.
Did we tape the meetings back then?
I'm sure we did.
And that first, I would think that's something that happened, you know, a while ago. Okay, let's, um-
Do we, do we have to enter into a motion to allow Larry to do that, or is it automatic?
It was, I think it had discussed, too.
I think I got consensus.
Well, I think, I think the question would be for Wayne to instruct him to go into it.
Right.
Okay. Let's see, we'll go on to, it's time to go home. We got the city manager, Mitch Elanis.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Board of Commissioners. Good evening to you. I'm just here tonight to, I want to praise our planning commission. I thought Tuesday night was extremely nice. Everyone handled their stuff with professionalism. Will Owen and Larry done a great job in advising them and helping them, and I just, I think sometimes we might take them for granted, but they did an excellent job. And I just wanted to throw out a good thank you for them, and I appreciate them so much. And that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, I do agree. I think it turned out really nice, and thanks to the city for having somebody available and airing it and letting that part be on Channel 19. I know that was additional time, and so I appreciate that, and I appreciate everybody that came out. Is there anything, is there any comments that you have to make on any other things that are going on, the city investigations? Any news on when will, a big question in the media is, when?
I'm hoping very soon.
Okay, so you've got a deadline in sight or whatever?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. I only have one statement to make tonight, or one comment. At the last board meeting, the board gave me the authority to prepare the documents for the rezoning of Boston Place 2. I made the statement at that time that I could do that. I would have had them here tonight. At the planning commission meeting, the representative who's here was advised that we would need copies of the current deeds to do this. The statement was made again at the board meeting, the first one this month, when I said I could have them if I had the deeds. As I sit here right now, I still don't have the deeds, so you don't have the documents tonight. As soon as I get them, I will prepare the documents, and they're aware of it, so the ball's in their court. But I did want to inform the board that I'm not just sitting on it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Commissioner Bissell?
Thank you, Mayor. I just kind of got an open-ended question here, maybe Larry or Wayne or somebody. I saw on Facebook, and then I experienced it myself, don't we have an ordinance that prohibits door-to-door solicitation for for-profit organizations? I've always heard that. Now, churches, the ball teams, scout groups, you know, I, but I, I thought, but I can't find it. So Larry, do we, or Wayne, do you know?
No, sir, I really don't know, but I think it's sometimes, like in homeowners associations, I think they have their own individual no-solicitation signs and stuff like that. I've actually seen some. But for the city to have an actual ordinance, no-solicitation, I'm not sure of it. You know, I'd have to really research the codes. Maybe John Bledsoe can find out for me in the morning also.
If, if we do, I would like for us to figure out how to enforce it.
Yes.
If we don't, I'd like to put it on the agenda. There's a very nice lady that came to my door, but she came too late. She talked too long, and-
Was she a politician?
Uh, no.
Okay.
No. And I really, I really think that there comes a point in time that that's just not appropriate, comes late at night and that sort of thing, so.
So you're going to get a gate like us?
Well, I, actually, I was thinking, if we wanted to allow it, we would stop it at dark, and that would be it. But I, personally, it's kind of like the blocking people out on the phone, you know? I'd like not to be bothered without having to put a sign up that says no solicitors. But if you could check into that, I appreciate it, and that's all I had, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Crutcher?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. I, in light of the investigation that has been going on, I guess Monday will be three weeks since the media reported the incident in the police department, with the police department, I would like to, or for this board to consider the BOC conducting a hearing on the issue surrounding the police department. I think it's an opportunity for the BOC to have prepared and preserve a public record for any further contingencies due to the PD being investigated internally. It's an opportunity for this elected body to take a look at the overall operation, and that would be in a public forum. So what I'm asking is, is that we have a special meeting, maybe Tuesday of next week, and the purpose of that special meeting would just be to vote on whether or not this board will, in fact, conduct a public hearing. And I'd like to have Mr. Hall comment on my proposal as well.
I would be in favor of that, and also, we would need a time, if you've got a time in mind.
I will not be here on Tuesday.
Well, it doesn't have to be Tuesday, that was just a-
I'm just, I'm out of town from Sunday to Thursday, so it would have to be Thursday or Friday.
Thursday is, can everybody do Thursday?
Uh, let me see. Are you talking night, daytime?
I can do either one on Thursday the 25th.
It would have to be at night for me to get back.
Night. Six or seven?
Six. Six sounds good, Mayor.
Six is fine.
Mayor, whenever you can get here, Mayor, I think it's when we need to do it then.
Well, then, you need to make it, um-
6:30?
Yeah, I could probably do 6:30.
Let's do 6:30 then.
Um, okay, so let's see. Write it down, and try to do it in my calendar right now.
This-
Okay.
Clarification, this is not the actual hearing itself, this is just to sort of set the parameters where we want to proceed.
Set the parameters, times, dates.
Do we really have to meet for that? Can we not just, um-
Well, that's a Larry question.
I think that's a Larry question.
If you're going to set a meeting to have a hearing, it needs to be done in an open forum, it needs to be done by the entire board.
Well, I agree with that. I'm saying, to set the parameters, does that have to be, I have a meeting to have a meeting?
I imagine the parameters are spelled out in the charter.
Well, I had to ask, initially, my question early on was, is could I add it to tonight's agenda as an exigent circumstance? And I think this probably qualifies as an exigent circumstance. And to counsel, I was advised to do it in my comments versus as an added-on agenda item. And the reason being that there is some school of thought that unless you, and you know, even in exigent circumstance of the, as much public interest as this is, you don't give much notice before you, you know, when you add it. You've got whatever time from when you added to get here for it to get out, and I think it needed to be very obvious that it was advertised, and the public knows that you're going to have a meeting to set, the meetings that you're going to be sitting will be when people are going to be testifying. And you'll have a clear recorded path of when you had the meeting, when you set it up to have it, and if you have to suspend the meeting for another meeting, then you advertise when it was suspended. But I think it needs to be very clear that, you know, the public don't have, no one has to come, but they have to have the opportunity, should have the opportunity to be there. Well, and it's, I'm sorry.
That's okay, I just, I have a question.
I was just going to say, as part of the meeting next week, in setting parameters, we could also talk about individuals that may or may not need to be subpoenaed.
Absolutely.
So that would be more than just having a meeting to set a meeting.
Right.
I think we could discuss that.
It'd just be part of it. I mean, you'd set, you'd have to set your time and your date, and then who's going to be there? Who are you going to require to be there?
Would you like to let Mr. Tal, would you like?
Do you foresee, in your concept of where we're going with this, do you foresee that this should impact what Mr. Hall is currently engaged in, in running the investigation, and possibly issuing letters and all of that stuff? Or do you consider this additional to that?
I consider this additional to that. I think Mr. Hall needs to take whatever action he needs to take as expeditiously and swiftly as possible, and then we'll conduct this hearing as collateral to that.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to do that, Mayor.
No, it was him. Thank you, though. Go ahead, Commissioner Johnson, if that's it.
Nothing, Mayor. Thank you.
And Vice Mayor?
Uh, nothing tonight, just get out those senses. Ask people if they've done theirs. Just check around, are you in the stores or whatever? Have you filled yours out?
I think we actually have a list of the people that, and the bad thing is, is we, five up here, know a lot of these people on there that's not done it.
Well, can, I get a list?
Okay. Okay, sounds good. Anything else? Okay. I do want to take the opportunity again to thank the Planning Commission for doing their part, and coming up, Mr. Butler, I guess through a question-and-answer session on Facebook, just invited this and kind of coordinated this in, realizing there is a lot of questions that people had, and it was such a great opportunity, and I hand it to the Chair, Lisa Anderson, for conducting it well and putting the guidelines, and I think everybody did well, and it was productive and answered a lot of questions. So with that being said, you know, I think every once in a while, we should do it again if the need arises. Didn't realize how many questions the citizens really had about the Planning Commission and what, you know, they do, and, you know, thank everybody that participated in that. I did want to make a comment, because there was a little bit of confusion just due to what was actually going on as far as a, you know, an investigation, and a lot of confusion with the media, and I just wanted to make sure it was clear, and it came from me, that there is an internal investigation done, conducted by Mr. Hall. We did consult with Kim Helper. They did send a representative from the TBI to talk to the city. They did spend some time in the office here. They did walk away, and I was contacted from Kim the next day, saying that for right now, there is no criminal investigation, that, you know, if we, as we were conducting our internal investigation, if there was any concerns, feel free to contact the office again. I wanted to make it very clear for the citizens, we'd be happy to pull the tapes when the TBI representative came in. We'd be happy to explain why the records request said there was a criminal investigation, because when that records request came in and the recorder was to respond, there was a TBI representative sitting in an office at City Hall. So there is no deception when it comes to that. And I'm sorry that it was misled in any way, and if you do have any questions, feel free, I will be glad to answer that. But obviously, as citizens, you must know, if you were employed here, you do have certain rights. And if there is an internal investigation, us as the Board of Commissioners cannot comment on internal investigation. I know it's difficult for the media, I know it's difficult for the citizens to understand, but we are not over personnel matters. And our charter states very clearly what we can do. So if you have any questions, please call me. My phone number, personal cell phone number, is on the website. I'll be glad to answer those questions at any time. And any news media that would like to call, I will tell them exactly what I've already sent out every time anybody asks me or calls. So with that being said, we live in one of the best cities in America, one of the best cities in Tennessee, and I'm proud to live here and proud to serve on the board. If I get a motion for adjourn? Okay. Meetings adjourn.